Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Fernando Lopez. I'm the Executive Director of San Diego Pride. I use they/them/their pronouns. And thank you all for joining us for another one of these LGBT Q and As. We're here with you live, so please feel free to comment in the chat, ask questions, because I am so excited to bring on today's guest, someone who brought a lot of firsts to our region. Just an exceptional guy. We could sit and nerd out and talk all day. Please welcome National City Council Member Marcus Bush. Marcus, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having me. I know I'm really excited about this conversation and following. We met for the first time last week and yeah, we went two hours. It could have gone three or four or so. But I'm happy to kind of continue that conversation on here and with viewers. We should have had, did a impromptu Facebook Live on our conversation. We covered a lot of topics last night.
Absolutely. I think we were like, so just having a great chat. We're like, man, we should have just recorded this and had this go live.
That's right.
See if we can replicate some of that magic. And speaking of magic, you have a wonderful, incredible family. How are you, your wife and your kids doing these days?
You know, we're doing good. All right. Like when I look at just the core of everything, like we have a house roof over our heads, like something we're healthy, so we're blessed on that. But you know, nothing is ever perfect, so we have our own challenges. It's not easy to be kept in the same like household and not really not go out much. And you know, even though working from home is a challenge, because you have, you know, my, my, my kids that need their attention. They each have their classes and their homework to do, so that can be a challenge. Modeling, my, my partner, my wife, you know, she has her things to do. And you know, sometimes it's honestly too much to have us all close together. And I think a lot of families, a lot of households are experiencing that too. But overall, when I look at it, like I'm happy, we're blessed, you know? It's, nothing's perfect in life, but that's, but that is life, you know?
That is life indeed. I know my, you got four in your house? And I can't imagine my, my roommate and I, sometimes he's teaching a class in the living room and I'm also trying to do a meeting in the other room. And that's basically everyone's life right now.
Oh, yeah. And then it's like, and you know, it's like, yeah, I could go to the office, but then I'm leaving the kids there and I can't bring the kids to the office for a number of safety and other reasons, but that's not practical. But I don't want to, you know, leave modeling alone by the kids either. So it's not easy. But I think, you know, we're doing our best to making work and I'm blessed to have them as I am where I am because of them. So I'm blessed to have them.
Well, you're, you're already doing great. And thank you so much for taking the time out of your crazy day to hang out with us for a while. I wanted to jump right in because you, you brought so many firsts to National City and to elected office in the region. Can you share a bit about, before we dive into the question, a bit about your identity? Like, what are your identities? How do you identify across a whole spectrum of things?
Yeah, sure. You know, identity, I have lots of different identities. And I came into, you know, being elected in November, you know, with, with those identities and making history in National City and actually in the county is first. So Afro-Latino, the first Afro-Latino elected to National City Council. My mom's Mexican, my dad is black, so I'm the second African American, but the first Afro-Latino. So coming into, you know, the space into government with, with that perspective. I'm actually tied for first for First Millennial with Vice Mayor Jose Rodriguez is also the first millennial to City Council. So first there, the first openly LGBTQ council member in National City's history. And also tied for first openly bi-elected in San Diego County along with Kate Bishop, who's a school trustee at Chulva's Elementary School District and Tara Lawson-Reimer, who's openly bi as well at the county. So, so that's definitely all these firsts that I'm, I'm bringing into this, into this space.
Well, thank, thank you for sharing that. I think, you know, obviously Pride here, we're all about celebrating diversity and celebrating our identities. And you just brought so much. And I remember when you first announced that you were running for office, I, I saw like, okay, there's this openly bisexual Afro-Latinx person running for office in National City. And I just sent you a message. It's like, I gotta know this person. Like, you're obviously very brave and competent to be able to do all of that. So just thank you for being so out there from the very beginning and honest with who you are and your identity. I mean, that's something that we're all about here and you just live that every single day.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And it's, it's not, it's not easy because I got, you know, there's early on the campaign, people were like, hey, you're, you're with a woman already. So why complicate things? Why talk about being bi? Why come out as LGBTQ? And I'm not even gonna lie, a part of it was, you know, my fears at first, like, so coming out is a process and I'm not finished with it. It's still having to unlearn the toxic masculinity that even I internalize and that I, I still perpetuate. And that I'm, I'm trying to work on, right? And that internalized homophobia and transphobia and all those other things. Let's take a lot of time to unlearn. I think it's so important to acknowledge that, that there's a problem and then you can work towards the solution. That's what I'm always trying to do. So part of my fear was that I've dated men in the past and me, part of my, and part of this was honestly driven out of fear of me coming out was, man, like, so all of my granger hookups, like, all of that is gonna, all my, the men I dated, all of that is gonna come, come out and people are gonna say, oh, you're, you're a phony. And so you have to be honest about that. So it's, it's in many ways unfortunate. It says a lot about our society that, that my coming out was driven by fear, right? But that's reality, I think, a lot of us have to face. But then, you know, it's kind of evolved into this process where it's like, you know what? No, like, you know, honestly, F what everyone else thinks about, about me, about who I am. It's, it's not your decision. It has nothing to do with you. It's, it's not even about you. It's, it's about me. And there's a lot of people, LGBTQ folks in my situation. And there's a lot of people that aren't LGBTQ that still are inspired by my story, my message, it's just me being who I am. And so I was necessary. And yeah, I got a lot of questions, you know, folks on both sides, right? So that's part of which I'm sure we could talk about more is biophobia and bi erasure. And, you know, I got, I got it from both sides, right? From, from the, a lot of folks in the, who are cis and hetero. So from that straight community, if you will, but I also got it from the LGBTQ community, like questioning, you know, whether I am, I really am bi. And so, so, so much of that is rooted in our own internalized homophobia and, and bi erasure. And so it's not easy to, it's not easy even to have this conversation in many ways, but it's like, we need to confront each other. We need to have these conversations. We need to be like, I'm being honest with you, with you Fernando and all, you know, the folks watching about, about who I am and my thought process. And I think that's like the first step is being honest about it. And then working with everyone else to unlearn all those toxic society ingrained behaviors, which stem from white supremacy. Like, that's what it stems from.
Yes. Well, you know, just the fact that you are even, you're having this conversation, you ran your campaign as an openly bisexual person. And I think that's such an important conversation to have. So like, let's stick there for a second. You, you called it out already, bi erasure is totally real, whether you're talking about the conversations that happen in sort of heterosexual, cisgender communities, or the conversations that happen in our own LGBTQIA2S+ communities, right? We, there is so much bi erasure that even happens here and this default to maybe ignoring an identity because it's easier. Or, you know, people call out, oh, you have privilege, right? Like, but you're already with a woman. So why would you bring on this whole other burden to yourself? And you're like, that's, that's who I am. And, and so just one, thank you for being out and open about your bisexual sexual orientation. I know that that is so meaningful to so many folks on my staff, on my board, throughout our organization and of course, our community. So can you talk a little bit about your coming out process? And if I may be so bold, you shared a wonderful personal story about how you met your wife. And I think it's so important for other folks to hear. So if you wouldn't mind indulging us.
Yeah, I'm just typing this down. So let me know if I don't hit the points. One of my also personally, really bad short-term memory. So I try to write it, write it down. So process, it, um, God, it was, well, let's start from the beginning. When I, when I was growing up and I, and I identified as straight, that's all I knew at the time. I grew up, growing up, I always got a lot of people saying, assuming that I was gay. And I was always baffled by that. And of course, having that internalized that homophobia, gay meant bad. So it's just like, no, of course not, you know, like, and, and I think when I look back and try to value what it was, like, you know, it's just me. I just give off that, that vibe that gaydar, as we sometimes call it. And I didn't even see that in myself. You could say it's behavior. It's because I, there's this feminine way of when I, how I talk. And I think as we progress as a society, we'll get past those like that, those boxes, right? And that just, those, those binary ideas of what it is to be masculine and feminine, but we're not there yet as society. I think we're getting there, part of this conversation, right? And so, so growing up, always got that. But it's still in my heart and what, what I knew, I was, I was straight. And then started realizing I wasn't as time, as time gone on. And so I, it came to a head for me back in 2015, when I was just overwhelmed with everything. I had split up with my ex, some other of my children. And, and so I was really busy with work. I just totally overwhelmed my, overwhelmed myself because I was Chair of the Planning Commission, on the Board of Directors for our National City Chamber of Commerce, just really simply engaged in working full-time and being a, a father. So I just got overwhelmed and it came to this realization that and, you know, addressing my own internalized homophobia and my questioning my sexuality, which was really like hard and difficult, you know? So I just, I realized, you know what? I need to leave San Diego. Like, I need to get out. I need to clear my head. I need to cut off everything that I'm doing. And I, and I need to just, just refocus, refocus on me. And so I decided the, the way to do that was get my masters and go to Portland State, which was a difficult decision. I couldn't take my kids with me. So I wanted to get done with that as quickly as possible. But I was there for a year and a half. And that's where I needed that space to just focus on me. So away from family and friends. And just, just focus on, on me. And just, and I, I had thought I, part of my coming out process, I thought I was gay. And then I realized, oh, no, I wasn't. I'm still into women and that's okay. Like a lot of my LGBTQ friends in Portland, some of them were helpful, some of them were not, because some of them were like, no, Marcus, you're gay. It's just a phase that you're going through, you know? And so I internalized that. And that, that I think prolonged my own acceptance and coming out process. And what, but it was what it was, you know? So, and, and then so how I, that leads into how I met my, my partner, my wife, my now-wife. So I was in, this was when I was still moving in Portland, but I was in Tijuana, partying with, with friends in Plaza del Zapatito and saw this gorgeous, most, one of the most beautiful humans I've ever seen out of the corner of my eye. And I worked up, built up the courage to, to start talking to her. And so, and I normally don't do that. And just in any situation. This time it's just like, and it wasn't just, modeling is a, is a physically gorgeous, amazing human being, but it's not just that. Like I, I, I feel like I have this ability to, to just like, when people, when their soul is beautiful, like you just feel that. Like you feel like I'm getting chills just talking about it. Like I just felt her energy and her spirit. I can't, I can't even fully explain it. So love at first sight, it sounds super cheesy, but, but it, but it can be real. Like it was real.
And like, here you are.
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, and here, and here we are. And in getting back to kind of where the bi conversation ties in is, so after we met, I moved back and so I had graduated and then I came back. So we kind of stopped talking for nine months. And then when I moved back to San Diego, that's when I started re-engaging her. And so by our second date, I was like, oh, she's really, really special. I can see myself a long-term relationship. The conversation about my sexuality hasn't come up yet. So, you know, I'm going to like bring it up then and I need to prepare myself. She, she may not be good with it. And if she's not, then she wasn't the one. And so we sat down on our third date and I brought that up. And she had this, when I was explaining, she kind of had this grin on her face. And I was like, this is kind of bizarre. Okay, I'm gonna keep telling my story. And then, and then when I was done, she's like, really? And I was like, yeah. And she was like, that's funny. I'm bi too. And so it was just like, I've been, then almost right then, I was like, oh, marry me. Like almost at that moment. So, but yeah, so that's, that's how, that's kind of, sorry, that was really long, but.
No, that, that's great. And I think it's important for folks to hear that. So let, let's take that back for a second because not everybody has the courage to, well, run for office. Not everybody has the courage to run for office as an out person, alone, out bisexual. Not everyone has the courage to walk up to someone across the room that they feel is attractive. And, and not everybody has the courage to come out so early on in that dating process, right? You were on date number three. So you, you came out and you, you found that the person sitting across from you, you also had a shared identity there, that you were both bisexual and you could both be open and honest with each other. So what was like, you said you had so much going on, going on in your head. And, and I'm sure that folks who are watching have, especially folks who are bisexual or in the closet or have been in the closet, have had similar things going through their heads. So can you, can you explain a little bit maybe about what was going through your head before you, you told Marilyn?
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I was, I was scared because this is a person that I just feel in my gut. This is a really special person and I want this relationship to work. I haven't felt anything special in years. So it was a fear of losing it by being truthful about my identity. And it was also based on, I'll share the story real quick, an experience I had in Portland where I did come out to a woman I was dating. And she started crying like right there at the bar. It was, it was a bizarre moment and where I was just patting her on the back and they're there. You know, so clearly she had her own issues going on, but that, but it was, it was an uncomfortable experience for me. And it was something that like, I was just, I was preparing myself for something like that because those aren't easy situations to go through. So that's what I was fearful of. And, you know, like I said, Marilyn's reaction was to smile and to say she's bi. And that was a whole conversation about just, it was a really deep conversation that her and I had about sexuality, about identity, expression, society and sexism. And in just in that, just from that spark of talking about identity, we talked about all these societal issues. And from her perspective in Mexico, which is totally different than here in the, in the US. And in many ways, Mexico has not progressed, in many ways, not a lot, not, you know, everything, but in many ways, Mexico has not progressed to the point where the US hasn't. So she shared her perspectives on that. And so it's just a deep conversation. I realized this is someone even more special.
Well, I'm so glad that you were able to find that connection and, and someone who could share that, that experience and, and share family with you, where you're both open and honest about your sexual orientation. And, and that's so meaningful. And you, so you, you were, you were afraid you had had some negative experiences before. So can you talk a bit about what bi erasure has meant for you in those personal experiences? Like, how do you experience bi erasure? And what does that felt like?
Yeah, I think it comes in a couple, a couple of ways. So bi erasure is, is just, you know, saying that someone's not a bi, that they're, that they're either gay or they're, they're straight pretending, right? So both of those things. And they're, and they're hurtful, just straight out. The other type, I don't know if this would actually technically be called bi erasure, if it actually fits in that category. But the assumption that being bi means that you're, you're polyamorous. That, and it's, it's, it's difficult to even address, right? The, because like, it's, it's personal. And it's like, what people do in their bedroom is their business. But I will, I'll, I'll share. And this is the extent that I'll share is that we, we as a choice, we're dedicated to each other. So we're monogamous. And it's okay if there's couples out there or not even couples, or whether, just for people, individuals who choose to be polyamorous. And that's, that's their business. That's, that's their conversation. But I think a lot of society assumes like, I, I posted a meme a week ago that said, you know, by, by married bisexual people are still bisexual. And, and I, and I knew, I knew, I knew that there was gonna be an ignorant comment on it. And so I did that intentionally because I wanted it to be a teachable moment and, and calmly explain why that's not true. And of course, I, I was right. Someone, you know, got on and said, oh, so you're gonna cheat on your wife? It's like, no, no, no. And then it's unraveling. And luckily I, you know, spoke to it like briefly and very objectively. But the cool thing is about, the beautiful thing about the LGBTQ community and just in, in National City, community members and friends that I, that love me, they jumped in and they gave their, their, their perspective and, and explained why that's not. Because it gets really exhausting too, to explain these things to people. It's important it is. It's, it's depending on our own capacity, right? So, uh, so, so yeah, bi erasure, it's, it's hurtful. That's kind of a couple of things that I've experienced. And I think the more of, in, in, you know, sexuality, really it's not, it's not a binary thing. It's, it's fluid. It's, it can change. It's, you know, there's, there's a whole spectrum. We talked about this. It's like the Kinsley X, like.
Kinsey scale.
Kinsey scale, yeah. So it's, and it's, and that's what it is. And I think, and I, hopefully I inspire more people to, to come out as bi or LGBTQ, come out of the closet and, and talk more openly about it. Like I said, there are uncomfortable conversations, especially in my role, which is still governmental. So it's, it's this gray area of to what extent you bring in sexuality to that, that top, that topic that's, that's government. But, um, but I, but I think it's necessary and I, and I hope to inspire other people to come out as well and, and share their experiences.
Well, and I, so I'm gonna go back to a couple of points you made because this is, see, see folks, this is why Marcus and I could just sit and like talk all day. Great time. Because, so when we're talking about gender, right? Just gender. And most folks who are not in our community might look at gender and say, okay, here's a binary. There's male and female. And ignore non-binary or non-binary folks. And, and then there's also gender expression, right? And the spectrum of what gender expression can be. And when then you talk about sexuality or sexual orientation and folks who, okay, maybe predominantly are interested in folks of the opposite gender or folks who are interested in folks of the same gender, but then that also sort of ignores, well, what about everyone in between? And all this non-binary spectrum of who's in there. And so when you talk about bisexuality or pansexuality, what that means, and I appreciate that you brought up that there's folks who think that, that is connected to monogamy or polyamory. And polyamory and monogamy, it's yet a whole separate facet, a whole separate piece of the spectrum. That, you know, you could be bisexual and polyamorous. You could be bisexual and monogamous. But that is, everyone has their own unique experience. And so I appreciate that you do that educational piece because you're right. People like to like dive in with their own assumptions about who we are or how we express our sexuality, polyamory, monogamy. So just the fact that you are out there and talking about this is so important for folks that, that you are that, that they can see that there's a leader who is out there talking about these issues and knowing that they themselves might be able to be open and honest about who they are and still seek to be a leader in public office. And it's really important.
I appreciate that.
Of course. We appreciate you being out there and having these conversations. So you, you've got another, non-binary identity. You have another non-binary identity. You are Afro-Latinx. And that has also, you know, presented some interesting challenges and criticisms for you personally and as you were running for office. Can you, do you mind sharing about some of those things that you shared with me?
Yeah. And actually, there's, there's some similarities, right? To between that, 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 you know, choosing one or the other. And it's like, and it's not, it's getting back to life is complicated and it's, it's, it's not black and white. It's more like rainbow. It's, it's a spectrum, right? So, um, but yeah, so my, my mom is Mexican-American, doesn't speak Spanish. These are, my great-grandfather, his name was Santiago Jarmio. He immigrated to this country in 1917 and, and to, from Albiol, Alascanientes, to work on the railroads in Eastern Oregon. And so that's, that's where a lot of my roots are and, and my, my family's from. And so he's, he's Mexican, predominantly indigenous Mexican. But, and that's another part of my identity that I'm on a journey to discover is which, which tribe, which indigenous group from Mexico we're from. And I think it's Chichimeca, but that's part, that's part is, is important, right? And it's something that I'm, I'm, I'm proud of because I'm, I'm, I chose the resilience of our family, that we survived, that my ancestors, we survived colonization. But we lost a lot of who we originally are, our own culture. So that's a, it's a big part of like what I'm trying to, trying to, trying to rediscover. But my, so my mom's Mexican, did not grow up speaking Spanish. And so, so I had to, I had to learn that. I had to learn Spanish in, you know, growing up. And then my dad's African-American. He's black. He's from Thomasville, Georgia. So descendant of slaves. I say that intentionally because I think we have to remind ourselves slavery wasn't that long ago. And that's another piece of me, of who I am, that I'm really proud of is that we, that I am a product of my, my ancestors' survival and that they, they made it through slavery. And so, so just both, both of those aspects really, really important to me. And it's not, I think during the campaign, there's a lot of, oh, there, I mean, there's so much, so much, God, I don't even know where to start, right? Like, there's so many different aspects I can go on. Well, one of them is, one thing I commonly get is like this choice. Is if I have to choose between my black side or my, my Mexican side. And it's, no, they're both, they're, they're both, they're both me. There is, there is no choice, you know? It's not that I'm, I'm one or the other. So that, that was a difficult part. And I think society, a society looks at me and given my features, whether it's my skin color, my hair, they, they categorize me as black and I'm okay with that. I am. I'm proud to be black. As long as that doesn't mean an erasure of my Mexican heritage, which I'm also very proud of. So it's not one or the other. It is, it's both. And so I'm really proud to do that. And I'm proud that, you know, a lot of folks, which, which is a form of racism, a lot of folks assume that, that Latinos won't vote for an African-American, that they won't vote for a black person. So I heard that several times during the campaign. Marcus can't win in National City because he's black and because Latinos won't vote for a black candidate. So that's false in so many different ways, data-wise and everything else. And it is to a certain extent hurtful, but it's like, okay, I got it. I got, there's no point in sulking about it and being sad or whatever. Like, I, I know that that's not the case. So I just gotta prove them wrong and do my best. And, and not even in the campaign, that, that's not the first things that came up during the campaign. It's, it's about what you're gonna do for the community. Like, what you, there's a housing crisis. What are you gonna do to address the lack of jobs and investment? Like, those are the issues to public safety or parks. Like, those are the issues people care about, not my, not my race, that the, my background and identity and ethnicity. It's something extra human that they can connect with. And it's something very, very important that our society is reflective of, you know, our, our, our government is reflective of society, right? So, but, but that's, but it's, but it's not everything. It's, it's an end.
Well, and you, so you bring up a great point, which I think, you know, we, we talked a lot about white supremacy and the impacts of white supremacy when we were hanging out, chatting the other week. And so one of that, the interesting things there is the concept of racial triangulation and as a tool of white supremacy. So when folks say, well, Latinos will never vote for a black guy. Well, okay. So you're, you're somehow saying that Latinos are more racist than society, which is racist. Like, we live in a racist society. Latinos are a part of society. So there is racism throughout society. Now, we can all step forward and address racism, but this like idea of pitting other marginalized community groups against each other is, is this weapon of white supremacy. And I think for those of us who live at these intersectional lives, we have a whole different perspective. And I say we, for, you know, for folks who aren't familiar, I'm the product of immigrants as well. I'm a first-generation US citizen. My family comes from Mexico. And on one side, Catholic Mexican immigrants on one side, and I've got Jewish immigrants on the other side. And so there are folks who want me to be Jewish. There's folks who want me to be Mexican-American. And I'm like, yeah, I can't, you can't separate that. This is who I am. And I'm proud of like, I love hearing you say, you're proud of. And I'm proud of like, I love hearing you say, you're proud of both identities. I'm proud of both of those identities. I'm proud to be, uh, ethnic Jew, who, uh, the product of immigrants who escaped persecution and death to, to come and survive, to find a new life in this country and the product of Mexican immigrants and migrant field workers, uh, farm workers who came and struggled and, you know, picked grapes in this, in California. And, and I get to be here, there's no separation. And you, you really highlight that well in that you're, again, upfront as a leader, talking about those issues. Um, and, and just living your full authentic life. I mean, that's so important. So thank you again for that.
No, I appreciate that, Fernando. And yeah, just what you said, it just reminds me, like, you, you are a survivor. You're, you're, you and your family and your roots, like, uh, it's, uh, that resiliency of your family in both sides. So colonization and the Holocaust, uh, being a survivor of that and just, uh, and, and I, and I think in the audience, they probably have, uh, a lot of people have, if you really look back and trace your ancestry, um, you can, you can find where your family, um, survived and, um, through, through those types of persecutions. But all of them, at the end of the day, like, that I've seen, all of them traced their roots, uh, back to white supremacy.
What, the, the struggle against white supremacy? And, um, I, I want to take a moment, i- if I can, and, and call out that we just lost, um, an incredible community leader this last weekend. Um, I don't know how familiar you works, we didn't, we didn't have this conversation about Larry Baza. Um, so Larry T. Baza, um, he, uh, was of Chamorro and, um, and Latino descent, so a Pacific Islander.
I didn't know, I didn't know that they were Chamorro, I did not know that.
So he's got, you know, here's another person who has this like intersectional ethnic identity and he was always upfront about it. He always, he would introduce himself and, and say, you know, I'm from Chamorro and Latino heritage. And yet I hear so many folks ignore his Chamorro heritage or, or pass it over. And it, and maybe not even intentionally, maybe they don't understand what it is, right? And just like, folks might look at me and like, look, I get that I have all the white privilege in the world, I ain't stupid. Um, I know that I look like just a typical white guy. And so you could ignore the like Latino, Jewish, non-binary heritage. Like, you talked about how folks might look at you and say, oh, well, Marcus is a black man and great, yes, you are. And not understand that intersectional identity. But Larry Baza, uh, he was Chamorro, Latino, gay man. Uh, I mean, he was this huge champion for the arts, a huge champion for the LGBT community. And he spoke so much about the importance of our intersectional movement. And I thought of Larry when you said earlier, uh, that you, you think about your heritage and you go back to slavery. And Larry used to talk about slavery when he would give these speeches and he would talk about the progress for LGBT rights. And he would bring that conversation all the way back to slavery and emancipation and the Fourteenth Amendment. And he would talk about the women's suffrage movement and choice and the civil rights movement. And he would really, in these speeches, like draw the line and the connection, which as we were saying earlier, all goes back to these weapons of white supremacy. Um, and, and so I just wanted to take a moment and just honor that, like, what an incredible leader he was. Um, another intersectional voice in our community and, and just call him into the space because I, I know that so much of what you've talked about are things that Larry called for in our community.
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate that and I definitely want to give, uh, honor and praise to Larry. Unfortunately, Larry, we didn't meet, um, we didn't get a chance to meet. Um, and, and just in this, in this conversation, like, like I said, I didn't even know that he was, uh, Chamorro. Um, but I saw, I've seen, you know, through social media, just this outpouring of, uh, love and, and, um, and hurt too, and hurt. Because, um, I think, uh, and so there's, uh, unfortunately a lot I don't know about Larry that I have to discover and learn about. But he clearly left a huge gap in, um, the community. And so whether it's LGBT community, the Latino community and the Chamorro community, um, and, um, but, but others too, right? Like, you talked about him being truly intersectional and, and talking about slavery, like, um, so people, and that's it also, um, importance that, that I, that I want to do too is, um, my identities are, um, uh, important, my, my black community and my Mexican community, LGBTQ, um, millennial community, uh, but it's also important that we, um, reach out to other disadvantaged groups and we lift each other up. Um, you know, whether that's the Chamorro community, um, you know, Filipinos, um, even in, um, the Filipino community, uh, Philippine X community and, um, and, uh, you know, just our government overall. Like, I, I talk a lot about these issues about diversity and, um, racial equity and racial justice. Um, uh, because we are lacking representation, um, in, in, um, especially in the black community. Also still Latino, but also, uh, the Filipino community. So we need to be true allies and accomplices, if you will. We need to, we need to help lift, um, lift the other groups too. And it really sounds like that, that Larry, I, I could tell by just reaction, um, across the spectrum that Larry really did do that.
Uh, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, so funny, just to change gears sort of, but to stay on that thread, you know, we have this, um, I, okay, I'm gonna mess it up, but Todd Gloria is what, Latinx, uh, indigenous Filipino, uh, I, I, he's got so many identities. Uh, so that he always talks about that and sharing his identity, um, right out in the front. So our mayor here in San Diego, of course, to him speaking about. And, um, we, so we hung out with him a couple of weeks ago, uh, meaning, um, San Diego Pride, uh, and the mayor's office because we've been witnessing some really unfortunate, um, disturbing and disgusting hate crimes recently. And, uh, we, we wanted to address them as a community. And I think you're familiar with, um, in Hillcrest, there have been a disturbing trend for months of people from outside Hillcrest coming in, tagging buildings, um, uh, harassing customers and patrons and store owners. They, uh, and then finally a, a church and a gay bar were both tagged and targeted. Both had visible displays of support for the LGBT community and the Black Lives Matter movement. And, and folks would say, oh, that's not us, that's not who we are, that's not San Diego. But, you know, they sort of, it sort of ignores like, right, like mass resistance and, and their targeting of Steve Padilla and Chula Vista and, and the library in Drive from Soria or, or the years of, um, like white supremacist militias at our borders or the shooting at the Havad synagogue and the attacks against our Jewish community or, you know, the attention and protests and the beach just a, a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago. Or what Cora Schumacher has had to endure, um, you know, up north, in North County. And, and these are repetitive behaviors, um, in our region. It's one of the hubs of white supremacist activity in that country. And so, um, can you maybe speak to you, uh, have you, have you seen any rise in hate crimes or hate incidents in National City? And, um, can you speak maybe how some of this, uh, these issues have impacted you personally or professionally?
Yeah, uh, there's nothing immediately that comes to mind in National City. Um, but I could tell you, oh, sorry, I live across from the fire station though, so it's not getting around that. Um, but there, there definitely has been around the county, um, increase in, um, in hate crimes. Um, I'm hearing that, um, Asian Pacific Islander community as well. I think there was a, a woman in the last week, uh, um, an elderly, um, I think it was Filipino woman that was targeted on the trolley last week. So, um, so we're seeing that in a lot of, uh, different places. I can't think of a specific incident in National City, but it's, it's definitely a disturbing trend. Um, and I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, you know, all, all of it, all of it at the end, um, what, when I look at it, a lot of it stems from, uh, from Donald Trump and from him, him and the, um, complicit, um, leaders of the Republican Party that were supporting him. It's my opinion, what I've seen and observation. And, um, you know, it's been, uh, boiling beneath the surface, uh, for, God, for, but, you know, for, for centuries, right? This isn't, this didn't just happen with, with Donald Trump either. Like, this was happening, you know, during, uh, the, when Obama was elected, when I was so naive to think that, you know, Barack, uh, Barack Hussein Obama elected, um, uh, the first black president, um, you know, this is, this is really gonna change everything. Racism is definitely on its decline. It's like we took two steps forward and maybe even three or four steps back, like, when it comes to, to, um, to, to racial justice. Um, and, um, but at the end, I'm, what I'm appreciative of is that in the last four years, we've had to confront, um, racism, sexism, xenophobia, homophobia, um, transphobia. So in, in many ways, we've addressed and progressed, um, like at least the consciousness, the public consciousness, the society consciousness of that in a way that I didn't see during the, um, Obama administration, um, which we made, there was definitely progress during his administration. Being married, for example, is huge. But in, in terms of our public, our social awareness of those problems, I think they're just, um, they're finally more to the surface. It's uncomfortable, like really uncomfortable conversations for us to, us to, us to have. And people, I'm sure there's people in the audience that are uncomfortable with you and I saying white supremacy. You know, but we have to have those conversations, we have to talk about what, you, you know, when we look at all of these issues in our society, like what, um, poverty too, you know, what is the, what is the connection? What is, what is the link to all this? And we have to look at what the root cause of it to, to actually work together and to, and to actually solve the issues.
There's so much there and we could really like talk forever and you're, so you're right.
Yes, I did, when I went out, I was like, oh, that's another, whole nother conversation I'm getting into.
Let's just keep going. Um, yeah, it, it's, in the last four years, been a dramatic rise in hate crimes and violence. And, and you called out, uh, Donald Trump, um, and sort of stoking that, right? Which, which speaks to the importance of leadership, right? And the, the changing of power dynamics and perception and, and what becomes permissive and not permissive. Because like the reality is that white supremacy is woven into the core and the foundations of this country and have been. And we've been fighting it since the beginning. Um, so like that, that isn't new, right? But for, for whatever reason, when that, when someone at the top of the country is so blatantly, um, and outwardly, as you said, xenophobic, misogynistic, uh, racist, sexist, homophobic, transphobic, uh, that, that gives a permission for folks. And one of the early, I think, tell signs for us was, you know, we saw this rise, this epidemic of murder of black trans women. And we're like, well, when, when, when you're talking about homophobia, transphobia and really uplifting that and you're uplifting racism and you're uplifting misogyny, there's this Venn diagram of folks who are in the middle of that and it's black trans women. In, in, you know, people in our community, we try to ring the bell and say, hey, we have an issue here. We need to change, uh, we need to change the narrative, we need to protect our, uh, black trans women, we need to protect our trans community. We need to change something at the top. And, you know, you being a leader who's, um, Afro-Latinx, openly bisexual, like you, you represent something as well, right? So it's a way to flip a script, to flip a narrative. And now we have the first woman, uh, vice president, we have the first black, um, and API vice president. Um, right, top, top, right there near, you know, second in command, so to speak, at the White House. Can you talk maybe about the importance of representation and leadership i- in breaking those power, power dynamics or shifting the power dynamics in public narrative?
Yeah, I think, um, uh, yeah, so representation in our government is, is key because, uh, we like, when, and when it comes to finding solutions to our problems and being creative, be innovative, we need to have the whole, uh, sector of society represented. So that's, that's great. It's gender, it's, um, it's, uh, sexuality. It's even, um, our, uh, our disabled community, so looking at able, um, how we have our own privileges. I have my own privilege as, as an able-bodied person and making sure that, that we're representing our, our disabled, or physically, physically and mentally disabled communities. So that's, that's another group that we need to look out for. Um, and, and we need to have those voices, um, reflected, um, in government. And that doesn't mean that, um, you know, you or I can speak for our entire communities that we're, that we're representing, right? So we're not the voice, but we, uh, like, we're not the, the mouth, the spokesperson, um, but I think, but we're, we're a, a voice. Um, and, and, and a connection. And there's gonna be, I think, uh, times when, you know, our, our communities have to, have to, have to push us and there's gonna be disagreements in the community. But I think that's why, you know, we communicate, we have tough conversations and try to, you know, um, figure out what, what are those issues? What's our path forward? I think, uh, most of us have the same goal when it comes to, uh, equality and being able to, um, live in peace, uh, you know, set, uh, set aside from hate, I think everyone can agree with that, white, black, uh, gay, non-binary, whatever, you know? Um, but then how do, how do we get to that point? That's, that's the, that's the part, you know? And when you talk about black trans women, I just want to acknowledge just absolutely, black trans women are some of the most, um, discrimi- when you look at that, you said that Venn diagram, it's absolutely bad. And I have to gi- give you all at SD Pride a shout out. Uh, I did watch the panel last week, the, the, that, um, several panelists from the, uh, black trans, uh, community. And that was just really inspiring and I have to give a special shout out to, uh, Adonis Illusion. I think that's what, uh, goes by is the stage name, uh, Adonis. But I, I, I know him as Jonathan, uh, he's from, I'm su- super proud, I was in tears, uh, uh, watching him at, at the panel, uh, last week because he's from National City. So I, I've known him since, um, God, since the, um, since the seventh grade. Uh, so we went to the same elementary, junior high and high school together. So he's the brother of, uh, one of, uh, one of my, uh, best friends growing up. And so just to see his, um, and he goes by him, they, uh, she, all of it. Um, but to see, um, hi- his progression and, um, how, um, uh, one of the things he said was, you know, drag, uh, drag is what made me, um, uh, who I am, it's what I'm amazing good at. And, um, and just hearing that and seeing how Jonathan can inspire so many of our youth and, um, and, and our community members. Um, and especially in, in, in the South Bay, because in many ways, we in the South Great Bay, we have a, a long way to go in, in terms of progress. But it's, it's leaders like, like, like them that, that is, that I think is gonna take us to the next level.
And you and Steve Padilla and others down there doing some incredible work, um, just carving out those paths and, and inspiring our next generation. Absolutely. Um, I, I gotta throw another one in here for you that we didn't talk about, but this, this was introduced last Thursday, which is the Equality Act. So the Equality Act's been reintroduced into the House, um, looks like we might actually get the Equality Act passed. Um, it, it's a lot of, it's interesting, it's an LGBT bill, right? To give LGBTQ folks equal protection under the law on a federal level. But it's built off of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and 1965. So the, the black civil rights movement yet again, like carving a path forward. And, and that this new bill, what it's looking to do is, um, enhance the protections for communities of color, for women, for religious minorities, um, and for the LGBT community. Um, and yet, even if we get full equal protection under the law, you know, you kind of said it, like, well, Barack Obama was elected president. We've had this, the Civil Rights Act for quite a while now, racism wasn't over, racism wasn't over. So even if we pass the Equality Act, we still have so much work to do, right? There's a difference between a law being passed and actually all lived experience, uh, being treated equally. So can you talk about maybe the work that you think needs to be done specifically, uh, once we pass the Equality Act?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I, I'm not sure what the, so the Quality Act, hopefully, um, um, I, I think, so we, we also have, have to have a conversation about, um, when, um, the people who are supporting or the political parties, if you will, who are supporting those causes. So, so now it's, it's the Democratic Party in charge, which I'm, I'm proud to be, um, a, a Democrat. Um, so now that we're in power, um, are, like, are we going to, um, are, are we going to fight? Are we going to be bold and, you know, are we going to, you know, overcome? How are we gonna overcome the, the filibuster? Are we going to, you know, the, the past administration didn't, didn't care. Um, and, um, and I think, like, we as leaders need to not, um, kind of repeat the same mistakes in the past. Like, our, our communities, um, are, are hurting the most and, um, are in the, the need of the most help. And so they need bold leadership to, um, to, to achieve equality, um, and that it can do, to do the work. So if we get in power, um, if we say we're gonna do something, we get in power and they're like, oh, we're not gonna push this because procedurally the filibuster, we can't touch it. Like, no, it's not, then, then people are gonna lose faith in us and, and people are gonna, it's gonna disconnect and it's gonna be twice as hard to bring them back in the fold. So I would say the first thing, um, is that, um, that we need to, and I apologize for the background noise.
You're fine.
But I left the window open, should have closed it. Um, so, but the thing we need to do is, um, is, is to have like, uh, the actual strategy and be bold and actually be willing to push our agenda forward. And then once we, once we get there, I think it's, it's a continuing work organizing and what that looks like. Um, I think it's making sure that we, um, we're actually hiring, uh, the, the right folks. And, and that's just not in government, but in, in anything, whether, um, it's getting more representative even in the local government. So even in National City, um, getting more, um, diversity in our fire, in our police, in our engineering department, planning, like our actual city employees, making sure that, um, that there's, um, a good percentage of National City residents. We're hiring local, that we're, that we're training folks that we're, we're. that we're, we're diversifying that way. I, I think that's where kind of the rubber hits the road, and making sure that we get folks into these, into these different governments and, and systems, but also, now what are we going to do to dismantle these, some of these systems in procedures and processes and regulations that were founded in white supremacy, that, that are inherently kind of restrict public comment and community engagement? What are we going to dismantle that? I, I think that's the path. I know that's general, but I think that's the path forward. And I have to say, in National City, I think we're doing a lot of it, I have to give a special shout out to our mayor, Alejandro Salles Leyes, because our, our city had been ran by conservatives for, for years, and just seeing her come and being our first Latino mayor, and fly, you know, getting the, the city hall lit up and, and, and the rainbow pride colors for Pride Month. And I know that's symbolic, right? So it's, it's, that's not saying that, like, we're all equal, everything's great with LGBT community, we live a building, but it's a symbol, and symbols are important too.
Symbols are very important, and I just have to, because we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, I, I will say that, you know, I understand that some people are partisan, but policy is nonpartisan, and that we can all work on systems and policy, or we can all work on policy that can reform systems, that can dismantle white supremacy. And, you know, here in, in the city of San Diego, we had a Republican mayor, Jerry Sanders, who made history by coming out in support of marriage equality. And then we had another Republican mayor, Kevin Faulkner, who came out in support of the Equality Act to really demonstrate that equal protection under the law should be a nonpartisan issue. And so I, I think that, you know, you're, whether it is dismantling those systems of white supremacy, like prohibiting folks from commenting during public comment, or whether it's making sure, like you were talking about, you're reshaping the employees of the cities, counties, institutions, to be more reflective of the lived experience of the population that you're willing to serve, that looks like reaping a classroom, that looks like reaping a boardroom, and, and this is going to be a long road to get there, right? If we pass the Equality Act in the next few days, we're not there yet, we're going to have plenty of work to do. We, we've got the Fulton Supreme Court case coming up as well, sometime in the next few months, I don't know if you're familiar with the Fulton Supreme Court case, but that one is actually looking to build in a religious exemption to a lot of LGBT protections, and there's going to be some challenges there as well. Uh-oh, did we lose Marcus? Marcus, I lost your camera. Maybe you're, oh, there, you're back.
I tried to sneak off to close the window. I should have warned you guys, sorry about that.
No, you're fine. We really have to be careful about this Fulton Supreme Court case. The current makeup of the Supreme Court is, looks like they might carve out religious exemption from some of our protections. So even if we pass the Equality Act, that's on the line too. And so there, there's so much work to do to make sure that we're creating that world that's going to have the lived experience be better, despite what laws are there, are passed or not passed, and of course, we're going to keep pushing for LGBT equal protection under the law. Marcus, we're almost at time. Obviously, I could sit and chat with you all day. Do you have any final thoughts for the folks who are watching before we, we call it a day?
Um, final thoughts, so, no, I just wanted to, to, to thank you all for, for the invite and for this, for this long conversation. It's, it's nice to have conversations like this that are not just, because we can't really get deeply into the issues, and I can't, I, I mean, it's hard for me too, if it's just like five or 10 minute segments. So really appreciate this long conversation and all the, and the viewers for, for listening. And, yeah, if I, if I could leave with just an action item, I, I'd just say, or kind of call, call to action, it's just that representation matters, it's important for all, all segments of society, and for the LGBTQ community, I think that we need to keep pushing forward, we need to have these, we, confrontations almost, right? Like, you brought up, in, in South Bay, you brought up the library, the Drag Queen Story Hour, for example, so much hate and backlash for that. And so, yes, we need to, you know, fight that and, and confront it, but we can't do it alone. We need, we need our, our black brothers and sisters, we need the Latinx community, our, our disabled community, Jewish, Muslim, so, so all of these other disadvantaged communities, we really need to, to unite. Also, also the, our Caucasians, our, our white brothers and sisters, we, we need your support as well. So, so yeah, it's, it's, it's all, it's all of us working together to, to focus and solve on these issues, and, and my call to action is that, that if you can, you know, reach out to those other spaces, those other disadvantaged groups, that, that, that's, that's really helpful and today, this month, and it also needs to acknowledge that this is Black History Month. And so, and there's, there's a long way that we have to go to addressing systemic racism in, in, in the, for, for the black community, and even within our own communities, in the, like, let's confront anti-blackness in the Latinx community, let's confront anti-blackness in the LGBTQ community, which I've seen, and I've personally been a witness to, let's have these difficult conversations, and then let's talk about how we move forward.
100%. Marcus, I just appreciate you so much, I could sit and hang out with you all, all time. Let's have you back sometime again here to share with our folks. I look forward to hanging out with you again, and I love that call to action. If, if we're going to fight these issues, we got to do them intersectionally, white suppression, white supremacy is available to us all, and I, I look forward to continuing to fight that with you, Marcus. So have a wonderful day, thank you so much for joining us, we'll see you again soon.
All right, sounds good, thank you all.
Thank you all for tuning in, and just a huge thank you again to Marcus Bush from National City. Please join us again, we'll be back tomorrow, where we're actually going to have a panel discussion about LGBTQ philanthropy, and we're going to be talking to some of the organizations that San Diego Pride has funded over the years. For those who might not be familiar, San Diego Pride is actually the most philanthropic pride in the world. We've given out more than $3 million to LGBT organizations locally, nationally, and of course, all over the planet. We also, on Thursday, are going to be going live with a session called Black Histories and Black Futures. We're going to be talking with some LGBT community members from all different generations, so have a wonderful intergenerational conversation coming up on Thursday. If you like these live sessions that we're able to do, please consider making a donation to San Diego Pride and becoming a monthly supporter, sdpride.org/donate. We're keeping our fingers crossed about what Pride's going to look like this July, one way or another. So I miss you all, I can't wait to be with you again. Thank you so much for joining us today, and happy Pride.